Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Township Committee Meeting on this date, November fourteenth, 2024. Read a statement adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Hasbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of this meeting. We'll salute our flag and have a moment of time.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started tonight, I just wanted to inform you I am sitting in as Deputy Mayor for our fine Mayor Giuliano, who is feeling under the weather tonight, and that's the only reason I'm sitting in here, so we proceed with business now. Second reading of ordinance 2024-25 providing for the acquisition of a fire truck and various fire equipment.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for the acquisition of a fire truck and various fire equipment appropriating $1,500,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $1,425,000 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the Township of Lacey in the County of Ocean State of New Jersey. This is second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Say no more, motion opposed, the floor.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number two, resolution 2024-294A, authorizing the execution of an agreement with the County of Ocean.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of a Schedule C agreement with the County of Ocean. This is the annual agreement that we do with the County Roads Department for the sweeping and screening of our streets. The contract is up to $30,000.
Motion, move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number three, resolution 2024-295, awarding the contract for the purchase of natural gas.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract for the purchase of natural gas to UGI Energy Services LLC. This is through the Stafford Co-op for our public gas accounts.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number four, resolution 2024-296, authorizing the acceptance of an emergency management performance sub grant.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the acceptance of a sub grant award of the federal fiscal year 2024 of emergency management performance grant and emergency management agency assistance. This is up to $10,000 and the purpose of this funding is to enhance our police department's ability to respond to emergency management and catastrophic events.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number five, resolution 2024-297, authorizing Chapter 159 in the municipal budget, step federal highway safety grant.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2024 municipal budget of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 40A:487. This is for the federal highway safety grant. It's essentially a safe transportation grant. It's in the amount of $46,900.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number six, resolution 2024-298, appointing a public safety telecommunicator coordinator.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Aaron Collins as public safety telecommunicator coordinator. This is a leadership role to streamline communication between dispatch and the lieutenant in charge.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number seven, resolution 2024-299, appointing school crossing guards.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing school crossing guards for the Township of Lacey. We are going to be adding two new crossing guards.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number eight, resolution 2024-300, appointing an alternate member to the Environmental Commission.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, appointing Kiefer Garafolo as alternate number one to the Environmental Commission for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number nine.
Welcome aboard, Kiefer.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine, resolution 2024-301, authorizing cancellation of mortgage for property that participated in the Community Development Block Grant Housing Rehabilitation Program.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the cancellation of a mortgage on block 1633.04, Lot 6. This is for the release of a mortgaging for a property that participated in the COA rehabilitation program.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 10, resolution 2024-302, canceling taxes due to a disabled veteran tax exemption.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the tax collector to cancel 2024 taxes due on a property, granted the 100% disabled veteran exemption and refund the resulting credit balance.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 11, resolution 2024-303, authorizing the refund of a building department fee.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of a building department fee issued by the Lacey Township Building Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 12, resolution 2024-304, authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliano. I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Curatola.
It's bound to happen. Yes. Item number 13, resolution number 2024-305, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $12,291,417.53.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, and I'll abstain on T 0035.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 14, resolution 2024-307, rejecting the receipt of all bids for the Lacey Township dredging project.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, rejecting all bids for the Lacey Township Maintenance Dredging Project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Oh, I was just going to say that we only had one bid and it came in well over the engineer's estimate for the cost of the project.
I thank you. Item number 15, monthly reports.
For the Department of Community Development for the month of October, the receipts were in the amount of $86,633. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of October were receipts in the amount of $3,280. The Municipal Court for the month of September collected receipts in the amount of $20,162.12. Month of October, public works department collected road opening permits in the amount of $2,599. Recycling commodity in the amount of $946. Truck parking in the amount of $25. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number 16, motion approve caucus meeting minutes from October 24th, 2024. Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
I abstain.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 17, motion approve township meeting minutes from October 24th, 2024. Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
I abstain.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Item number 18, motion approve executive session minutes from October 24th, 2024. Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
I abstain.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes. Do we have some add-ons this evening?
Yes. Resolution 2024-308, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental service agreement with the County of Ocean for the storm water improvement construction project for the South Dock Bulkhead replacement. We're receiving county funding for the South Dock Improvement Project, so we need to do a resolution authorizing.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Additional?
Yes. Resolution 2024-309, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2024 municipal budget of the Township of Lacey pursuant to NJSA 40A:487. This is to authorize that money that we're receiving from the county into our budget to fund the project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
Lastly, resolution 2024-310, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey, awarding a contract to R. Kremer &amp; Son Marine Contractors LLC for the Lakeside Drive Bulkhead Phase 1 and Phase 2 Replacement Project, South Dock Bulkhead.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dyckhoff?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Curatola?
Yes.
That's all I have.
I want to obtain comments from the committee. Mr. Dyckhoff?
Sure. First, this past Monday was Veterans Day. I want to send my gratitude to all the veterans out there. Thank you for what you do. Keeps us safe and ensures our future. I want to congratulate Mr. McDonald and Mr. LaRae for their election. I want to thank Mr. Dolan and Mrs. Stemel for running. It's very important that, you know, people get involved. I want to thank Mr. Armato and Mrs. Peters for their election. It's unfortunately, there were no other people who ran and given all the criticism that the school board gets, it's not a very, sad state of affairs. I would think that someone who criticizes would step up, but they don't. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me start off. The parade is usually the first Sunday after Thanksgiving. However, this year it's been moved back a week to the eighth and it starts at 3 o'clock down at the Lacey United Methodist Church. Paving, well, we're finally getting it paved and it's tonight. They're paving Manchester, Western and Haynes. That whole intersection there is being paved and they're going to have detours. So if you're coming down Lacey Road and want to make a left to get down to the high school or something like that, forget about it. You're going to have to go either down to Lake Barniget Railroad Avenue or down to Route 9. They're not going to let you get past Adams Street, which is the street the back road into Wawa. So plan on that and particularly in the morning, it's going to be difficult because you can't drive on freshly paved road. They got to let it settle a little bit, so, so just be careful with that, the election. I just want to thank the citizens of Lacey Township for coming out and voting. It was a great turnout. Regardless of how you voted, I know my running mate Bob and I are going to do the best job we can representing everybody in Lacey Township. Let's see what else I got. Oh, the Business Expo is next Tuesday night, is that right, Monica?
Correct.
On the 19th, 5 to 9 down at the community hall, the new one. Oh, our next meeting is on the 26th of November because of Thanksgiving. Okay, we always have to move it around that week. So mark your calendars if you plan on attending that. And the Reeves Across America is December 14th at 12 o'clock. We're working on solutions on how to handle the parking because we can't park in Murray Grove this year because they've got an event going on that's going to take up a lot of it. If you've ever been to it, it's great, but we have a lot of people there, so we're working on that. Hopefully at the 20th, the 22nd, we'll have some more instructions on how to handle getting to and from there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I also want to congratulate Community Man McDonald and future Committee Man Bob LaRae on their election last week. And also acknowledge Skip Peters and Sal Armato for their win as well. And just acknowledge also the people that went up, put their name out there for election and did not get elected. It's a very time-consuming thing and it's hard to do. It's hard to put your name out there and, you know, trying to convince everybody to go vote for you. On a slightly lighter note, I just want to, two news items that crossed my desk. One, I'm lamenting the loss of the Star Ledger. It's as of February, January or February, early next year, it's no longer going to print, which will leave New Jersey with no newspapers, sort of, no print, print editions. It's really unusual. And I don't know, I don't watch much TV, but last week I happened to watch 60 Minutes. I don't know if anybody saw it, but the last segment was on robots that actually do marble sculpting. If anybody saw it, they're able to do, you know, sculpt these marbles or, you know, big, huge slabs of marble into fine details. It looks like it's done by hand by humans. So with both those things, I'm wondering what everybody's going to do in the future because the robots are coming and everything is going digital, so those are my comments.
Thank you. And maybe you'll save some money on labor if you build homes, Mr. McDonald.
I suppose so. And we kid because we care. Thank you for your comments. I would also like to congratulate Mr. McDonald and Committee Man-elect LaRae. It was almost 12,000 votes and no matter how anyone voted, that type of participation in a town with our census is quite impressive and I congratulate everyone that put their hat in the ring. People that know me, when I'm up here, I often talk about in glowing terms businesses because it's part of the backbone in our tax base. Last night I was fortunate enough to speak in Little Egg Harbor at a dual-chamber meet for Little Egg and Central Ocean Business Association. We have one of our members here from Koba who may or may not come up and speak during comments. It's a great honor to be there with Senator Armato and other mayors. We know that you have a choice in where you're going to open your business. We want to facilitate and offer that olive branch and go right up to the foot of the door and not get into your day-to-day business plan, but we want to tell you how to facilitate the paperwork. We want to bring you in and we want your business to be successful. It's in our best interest here in Lacey Township. I know Mr. McDonald is one of my co-leaguants with our recreation department. We'll have Mr. Wyland up here to have comments. There were some questions raised about the Whippet and things last month. I spoke to Mr. Wyland earlier today. He will be up here, but I can assure you that report is going to be positive to the good side of the ledger. The Whippet has been very profitable for us for a great many years now and I think we're still.
I think, I talked to him, I think we're going to bring him up during the budget meetings and he makes his presentation. So that's when we'll be, he'll do the whole thing. I talked to him, we're going to go back to day one and go forward from there. So everyone, so we'll have all the information on the Whippet.
So in just two nights, in that same vein here, and it was done by a lot of volunteers, the Halloween Expo, which got rave reviews and great acclaim, took in just over $15,000 and very appropriate and had a sensory-friendly portion of that trail too for the children that needed it, the younger children and those that have, you know, experiencing, you know, some issues with lights and bright lights and that type of thing. So nothing but good reviews. We're grateful to those young people from the high school that worked on it and of course our recreation, our DPW, our police, that we're all there. So we're grateful for that. That is all I have this evening. Welcome veterans, thank you for your service. It was wonderful on November 11th, our ceremony out right in front of Bicentennial Park. And that'll conclude my comments. Well, off of the floor now to the public. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Yes.
Name?
Please.
Laura, okay, Laura Schetlich, can you misspell it?
Yeah, can you? Thank you.
You're welcome. So I want to discuss the Forked River Bayfront Park again. Surprise. Recently I was at the, I believe it's called the John C. Bartlett Jr. Park at Berkeley Island, which has a very similar setup as the Bayfront Park does. Same foliage, a lot of the same grasses and shrubs and it was alive and beautiful. It was a joy to be at compared to the Forked River Beach Bayfront Park, which is now a desolate landscape of nothingness. So I want to address two issues, one being the pollinators and one being erosion, which should be a main concern for the people living there, which I know it is. So I've got a lot and I, so I'm just going to read off my notes so I get everything. So you continue to mow these beautiful flowering beneficial plants in the spring before they even get a chance to flower. In May, when you do that, the milkweed's not even flowering yet. A lot of flowers aren't even there and you're cutting them down, not even giving them a chance. And then again, in the fall, just last month, I was there right before you mowed it and it was alive and beautiful. A lot of the plants flower well into the late fall and were still blooming when you guys came or sent the Department of Public Works down to cut them. Okay, still blooming, still beneficial for the pollinators. One shrub that lives down there, which doesn't live in a lot of places, is called the groundsel bush. It's a member of the sunflower and aster family and it has the ability to thrive in windy and salty locations. So it's perfect for there. And I've understood that the DEP, after Sandy and you guys were replanting, suggested certain plants to plant down there, the groundsel, I'm sure, being one of them for a reason. So that was still blooming when you guys came with your tractor and your big saw and hacked it down. I think it's called a tractor-mounted tree saw. Anyway, so that was still being used. They were still in bloom. They can be pruned back if necessary because I know a lot of people on the path think that they're blocking their view, which if you go down there when they're in full bloom, they are not. But cutting them down to the ground can be very detrimental because if the water does come up that high and covers their roots, they won't get the oxygen they need to live. And they are part of the erosion control down there. As well as the large grasses, the phragmities that are down there that you also send the Department of Public Works down to literally hack down to the ground. Now, they are not native like the groundsel is, but they are beautiful grass and it's everywhere down here, up and down Route 9. It's all over the place. There's no getting rid of it. It's beautiful and it's beneficial for erosion. It's also beneficial for birds and many other insects. And again, the lack of oxygen, they're hard to kill, but a lax of oxygen will kill them and dead plants provide no erosion control. They won't be able to hold onto their soil if they're dead. So these flowers and shrubs and grasses also provide food and fuel, cover, nesting area for many birds, insects and small animals and a place for birds to rest while they're migrating. Without anything like that, they're open to predators. Without habitat and food for birds, we'll see an imbalance and an increase in non-native invasive insects, some of which can cause major damage to trees and crops. So since I brought up birds, I want to talk about the pollinators at the park. So we just, we talked about the erosion with the plants that you're hacking down. Or not you personally, but sending the Department of Public Works to go down there and do it. So at the park, we have a handful of pollinators, field mice, bees, bats, birds, moths and butterflies. We all use those plants that continue to be cut down before their life is done for the season. The bird population has declined by 34% since 1970. 2.9 billion breeding adults in North America. Grassland birds collectively, the songbirds, have declined by 53%. These are the birds we love to listen to in the springtime that are coming back now migrating from the south. The eastern monarch, which is on the Union for Conservation of Nature's list of endangered species, is on a waitlist to be officially declared in danger under the Endangered Species Act. Their population has declined 60% in the last year, 80% total since 1990. Loss of native nectar plants, many which grow down there. Most importantly, the milkweed is the main cause of their decline. Monarchs are specialists, which means they rely solely on one plant in particular, which is the milkweed for survival. Adults lay their eggs on the plants, the caterpillars eat the leaves of the plants and the adults feed on its pollen and nectar. All of these plants and shrubs that I brought up are, that are dependent upon them are all at the Forked River Beach Bayfront Park. It's way past time this practice of leveling it twice a year be stopped. Over 200 people on Lacey Chatter liked, loved and commented on my post last month agreeing with me.
Michelle, look, I have to respectfully.
I got one more sentence.
Okay.
Okay. So my question is, and I don't want to hear the same answer. I'm not talking about mowing along the path for safety, which you have said, or Mr. McDonald has brought up the fact that the Department of Environmental Protection said what plants to plant down there for the turtles. And so because it's after turtle season, it's okay and they should have, then why didn't they say, you know, not to mow? Well, I want a real reason. Why are you going down there and hacking everything down to the ground?
Okay, I will answer you.
I want a real reason.
Yes, no, I have every intention. People that know me know I speak from the heart and we're all being recorded right now.
Yes.
What I will say to you is that the mowing season traditionally for regular landscaping is anywhere from 20 to 26 times once a week, depending on the day of the week, doesn't matter. It's 26 times things get mowed. I disagree with your characterization of hacking. We've been extremely responsible. We've cut that area two times this year since the spring.
I've seen the blade on the tractor.
Two times.
That's hacking it down.
We've cut it two times. In addition, that, and I think I am qualified to say this. I'm the Cooperative Coastal Monitoring Program Manager for Ocean County. I went down there, I walked it with the young lady in the back left part of the room and what I saw was a thriving ecosystem down there. And, and there was so much overgrowth that the tubes that the turtles are supposed to transport themselves to were overgrown. There's no turtle on this planet that could get through that. So I would disagree respectfully with your characterization. You asked me to go down there, I have been down there twice. We've only cut it twice. We cannot make everyone happy, but it really, we've given the people that have the opinion and it's your, I'm here to work for you. But what I don't want to do is, is overdote on one subject matter. I don't think it's fair to the other very important items that we deal with here throughout a 365-day year. And we've given this item fair course.
Well, I'm not going to stop.
That's fine.
Just so you know.
That's fine.
I don't plan on stopping until this practice.
We cut it twice.
It's not just cut, you honestly go down there with a saw attached to a tractor that hacks those bushes down to the ground for no reason. Why are those bushes being hacked down to the ground?
And we just got a letter today forwarded.
Why are they being hacked down to the ground?
I'm answering you, please. We got a letter today forwarded by Administrator LaRae that there was concern by one resident that we have to keep that walkway clear or we will get sued if somebody.
These bushes are not on the walkway.
Listen, we're going to agree to disagree agreeably, I suppose. Listen, we're going to agree to disagree agreeably, I suppose. I am, we are allowed within the scope of that permit to cut that lawn, cut that area twice a year. It's a thriving green. I barely saw a brown blade of grass. My last day there was July 23rd.
Well, we were in a drought. It's probably green, I mean brown, right now, but I'm not talking about the walkway necessarily. I mean, some of those, the bushes aren't growing on the walkway.
I have to invite the other people, of which there are many, up for comment. We invite you to come back up again.
I'll jump in for my own personal opinion, and we've been talking about this for so long. If I lived, and I'm talking about just the walking path behind the houses, never mind the rest of the park, but on the walking path, if I lived there and it was my house, I would not want it cut, because I do believe that helps storm attenuation and soil erosion. However, I don't live there. So yours is one opinion of the other residents that live there as well. So we're just making a call with the best information we have, and we try to take everybody's an opinion account, and, you know, sometimes it doesn't go the way you always want it to.
Well, there's seven houses there that want it cut down.
And we've left...
And they have said it's because of their view.
And we left, and that's fine, but that's, but we gave the option of the people that do not want it cut to leave it up, and that wanted to...
And if you talk about it thriving, that's the only part of the park that's thriving and that's alive. If you walk that path, you don't hear a bird, a cricket, you don't see a butterfly or a moth until you get down to the last two houses where it's not cut. The rest of that park is barren and dead.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments, please? Please. Name only, no address, please.
Kelly Stankowski. I wrote what I have to say down, so it's two points that I'd like to make. Unfortunately, one is one you told not to talk about, but, "Good evening, I'd like to begin addressing the council regarding the recent cutting down of the vegetation at Bayfront Park. While I understand the rationale behind maintaining the area, I am deeply concerned about the extent of the vegetation that was removed, particularly on the water side of the Gabion Wall. These plants are essential to holding the soil and protecting our community from storm damage, especially during the storm season. Numerous studies highlight the phragmities are among the strongest plants for soil stability. Therefore, I urge the council to reconsider this action and make it the last time we compromise the natural defenses of the Bayfront Park. It is detrimental not only to the environment, but also to the homeowners, the town, and as a whole, not to lose the little protection that we have. Thank you for allowing me to express these concerns."
Of course.
Now, I was wondering if I could actually turn my back to you and speak to the people who were here, if you would allow me.
Please.
I'm a little nervous. I wish to speak directly to the audience, both of those in attendance who watch online. I stand here today, perhaps with no other thoughts or reason, not solely to address the council, but to engage in the community. While I occasionally voice my concerns at these meetings, I also watch nearly every session online. I must admit, I do not always agree with council decisions or the manner in which they are presented. However, I believe it's essential for us to find a happy medium. Communication is key, and we must learn the art of give and take. One aspect that has stood out to me in this prevalence of negativity and mean spiritedness should not be tolerated from either side. During a recent meeting, I watched a report card that was presented to Mr. McDonald, attributed to a group of individuals. I am curious to know how many truly represent this group. It is really a constructive approach. Is this really a constructive approach to effect change? If anyone believes that they can do a better job, I encourage them to consider running for office or proposing policies that foster collaboration. I keep hearing about a large group of supporters behind certain initiatives, yet I do not see them in attendance. Instead, I often witness the same individuals questioning council members for their property, about their property benefits, their allocation of school funds, and implications of our taxes. As we move forward, situational solutions seem scarce. I usually, I urge everyone, both the council and the public, to work together. The spirit of meanness and mowing has no place in our community or in this arena. This perspective only comes from one taxpayer in Lacy Township, and I hope it resonates with many of you. Thank you for your time."
Thank you, Ms. McAskey. Any other comments from the audience tonight? Yes, ma'am.
Lois Rafferty. I moved to Forkett River just a month ago, bought a house, a couple blocks from the Lacy Elks, so that area, and I was really looking forward to that waterfront park being near where I could go and walk, and I'm very sorry to hear about this mowing, because I too like the vegetation there. Just wanted to comment on that.
Appreciate it.
And I hope you stop it.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. She raised her hand.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking right at her.
Hi, Donna Brophy. Just for the record, this is my third year coming up before you with the same issue, and I don't understand why it keeps continuing. I understand your perspective, and I appreciate that you try and take the middle ground and try and please everybody. You can't please everybody all the time, but I do appreciate and recognize everything that you do do for all the residents. So with that, I would like to thank you for mowing and removing the weeds last month, and I thanked the DPW workers who are out there. I appreciated everything they did. I mean, it's a park, it's a township-owned park. People come to enjoy the water views. They don't come to go through what I consider to be a jungle in the last two homes where it's so overgrown that you can't see anything. And it is a township-owned land, and I believe it should be maintained for that reason, so that people can come and enjoy the water views. I've seen people walk, and because of the growth, I've seen a little boy fall into the weeds, not knowing where the bottom of the ground is, scraped his leg. When I walk it and another person is coming, or there's a bike coming, I have nowhere to go to move out of the way, so the overgrowth is a safety hazard, in my opinion. I'm all for milkweed growth. I have milkweed on the side of my house. I'm all for that, but this is not a, an area that is a nature preserve. This is not the intention of that land. It's a, it's a park, where I've seen people come, enjoy the water views, enjoy the land, fly kites, and I've maintained that. I've said that to you numerous times. So I would just recommend, if you are concerned about that, plant milkweed around your house, like I've done, so to nurture the butterflies, but I still have the water views, and I still think it's a township-owned land that should be maintained, much like Gilley Park. That's a township-owned property, township-owned park, and it is maintained, and it's beautiful. And that's what I think this park should represent as well. I know, I just wanted to mention that Sandra Arnold couldn't make it, but she said she sent a letter, and I trust that everyone was able to read that and review it, so I didn't have to share that opinion with her, but it is our opinions. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I don't understand why the last two homes get to dictate their own policy. I understand you're trying to find a happy medium, but I feel like, again, it's township-owned land that abuts their property, and that's not being maintained, but yet we have to fall in line and follow what's dictated to us through township, yet they don't. So I don't understand that disparity. That's basically all I wanted to say. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments this evening?
How we doing tonight, folks? I'm Andy Masiolak. How we doing?
You spell your last name for me?
Sure. M-A-C-I-O-L-E-K.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you for cutting the grass. It didn't get done on the 15th, but it did get done, but thank you. And I also want to thank guys for the park benches that were put in at that park. They're awesome. And I want to give a shout out to Robert, I think it's Crasco, the Director of Public. I thanked him and the two guys that put the benches in, it was a wonderful job. I know, and Denise Vaccaro, my partner, my neighbor, she's not here tonight, she says thank you for the park benches. Okay, so now, my question to you, who decides what time the parks close, open and close? How's that decided?
The governing body decides that, and they establish...
You guys?
Yes, establish an ordinance that is then put into our code book.
Okay, because I took a ride to the beautiful parks at Lacy today, a few of them, and of course, the Bayfront Park is the only one that has a sign that says the time it's open and closed. The other ones don't, okay? Why is that?
Well, at the time, again, this has been part of the hot topic with regards to this park. There were people that were there well after dusk, because our parks are normally open dawn to dusk. That is the traditional ordinance, dawn to dusk.
Got you.
And a lot of, again, there are some very close houses along the walkpath, and they were concerned with people, because some of those, that pathway goes behind people's houses, right?
I walk that at night, too.
So there was concern that, you know, there's, in the dark, because there's no lighting there, that they don't know who's walking behind their houses. Like, is it you just getting exercise because you're home late from work, or is there something else going on? So we established firm times that that park is opened and closed.
But you have a sign saying it's open from, I believe it's 5:00 to 10:00.
I believe you're correct with the time.
Okay, all right, I got it, my phone.
The other parks are, the other parks are dawn to dusk.
I forgot to bring my phone. It's dawn to, okay, I got you. All right, and I'll tell you why I'm leading up to this, because there's two incidents happened to me during the summer. In July, my daughter and my nephew were walking to the park, and I guess it was around 9:00. It was still daylight, and the police officers told them they had to leave the parks closed. Okay, I didn't say too much about that, but then in August, I was at the park at 8:00, and this is in August, and it's daylight, so you can't use that, oh, well, it's nighttime and all this. I was asked to leave the park, it's closed. To me, that is, that's unsatisfactory, that shouldn't happen. Now, my question, who made that decision? According to what I was told, the police made that decision. They come there at night, the night shift comes in and locks the gate at night. Is that correct?
Well, again, they follow the ordinance, you know, they should be following the ordinance...
But that's what ordinance are you talking about?
10:00 PM, and they do open and close the gate.
Okay, but they don't do that to the other parks, though? My only...
There are other parks that are closed, the gates are closed.
The bathrooms, but not the gates?
No, if they have main gates where a car could drive in, those gates are closed by the police.
Okay, but I looked at the gates, and they don't look like they were closed recently because the leaves haven't been moved, so I could be wrong on that.
No, those gates are closed, and the police open them in the morning, or Public Works may.
Well, I was at the one park, there was no gate, so you can't close the park.
That's correct, there might be parks that don't have gates.
So my thing is, why does this park have to be closed and open, and the other ones don't? That's, you know, I just don't understand. Why did I have, when the cops said, the police officer, he was a nice guy, by the way, he wasn't being nasty, he was very nice, said to me, we had, there's two people that complained that live along the park. Well, I lived near the park, right around the corner. You're telling me I don't have the right to be in the park at 8:00 on an August night, you know, because these people complained, so the police decide they're going to shut it down? That's not fair.
Again, there's an established order...
If you're going to have a sign, then take the sign down. That's false advertisement. The park's open till 10:00, it should be 10:00. Am I correct? Am I right or wrong on that, guys, ladies? Would you, if you, if the speed limit says 25, you're doing 25, you're not going to expect the cop to pull you over to give you a ticket, right? Because you're doing the speed limit. So if I'm at a park at 9:00 or 8:00, I'm not expecting the cop to tell me I got to leave, you know? So is there anything we can do about that?
We'll call the chief tomorrow after I talk to the mayor, and we'll iron this out. We'll figure it out.
Very much, thank you kindly. Appreciate it.
We'll get a memo out to the police.
Thank you, God bless, anyway, but thanks for the benches, they're awesome, by the way.
Thank you. Comments?
Good evening, I'm Kevin Muir, and I have a comment about, I'm sorry?
Let me say anything.
I think that's behind.
Oh, okay. So my comment is regarding the Calvin Street where the new apartments are being built, Walter Apartments. There's a very dangerous situation on that road. The building, construction people are parking their vans along the street there on Calvin Street. The people who live in the houses, they park their cars on the street. One house parks their car in the wrong direction, so at night, when you drive down heading towards Newark Avenue, you don't see taillights, you know, they don't reflect. It's, that road is getting really dangerous, and there's, you know, there's a lot of traffic on there, two cars coming at the same time. You know, I think something, I don't know what the town ordinance is, maybe you can park on both sides of the street, maybe you can park in the wrong direction on one side of the street, but it's a situation that I think needs to be attended to or looked into. So I just wanted to bring that up. And with that in mind, the new house that's being built on Newark Avenue, is parking going to be allowed on that street? Because, you know, right now, it's a bicycle lane, so the house isn't occupied yet, but I think it's worth mentioning...
There's no established bicycle lane on Newark Avenue, and we do allow on Newark Avenue on-street parking, and they are supposed to park in the correct direction of traffic, and that's a police enforcement issue, and we do have an ordinance on the books for properly parking on the street.
Okay, I mean, it's been going on for a long time, so is there, are the police officers still here? How does that get reported?
Well, you could call it into the police, and they would send a car out. You know, they do do monitoring of local traffic situations when they're out and about, but calls for service come first, obviously, so if they are able to, you know, monitor that, that they will. But you could call them and report it to dispatch, and they will send a car out, and they will go out and knock on the person's door and let them know that they have to move their car and have it faced in the right direction. Yeah, and I think a lot of, and I agree with you that there are a lot of contractors currently parking there, because I do see that a lot. I do think that, you know, once that site is complete, you're not going to see as much parking there, because again, you're a contractor, but you're driving your own vehicle there because you're not leaving the shop, you're leaving from your house. So I think you're seeing a lot of that dissipate once that site is complete.
Yeah, that'll go away, but, I mean, for right now, it's a dangerous situation, and it's, I don't see passenger vehicles there, I see work vans.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
And they, I mean, that's a big complex, they should be able to find parking. I know the street behind Lacy Township there, or Lacy Car Care, you know, let them park along there. I'm just thinking safety, you know, public safety. And you say that even though there's a bike lane on Newark Avenue...
There's not, I don't think there's an established bike lane. It's not by ordinance. It's not an established bike lane by ordinance, no.
Oh.
There's no established...
So they'll be able to park along that street, on both sides, when they build on both sides of it? Interesting.
Unless the town wishes to establish an ordinance that does not allow any parking on the street.
Where does that comment, you know, my comment come into play?
Well, that would be for them to determine if they want to send it to the engineer, for an engineer to do a study, to determine under the manual on uniform traffic control devices if it warrants to have no on-street parking.
Okay. I hope you take that under advisement.
I'm going to call the chief tomorrow, so I'll talk to him about this, too.
We will, we'll take it under advisement.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Let me give these folks a chance first.
My name is Rob Schickling. I want to congratulate yous on the job you did cleaning up the park. Looks great. The kids can play in the field, they can walk up and down the park, the path. The end of the path is a little sketchy, to say the least, but, you know, got to make some compromises with everything. I think you guys have a good handle on everything, and everything's working out. As far as the gating for the park, there's areas that are not gated next to where the gates are. And kids come in there, and they're riding their e-bikes and stuff on the park at night, we can see them from the house, and you can see them, and they're speeding along in there, and that could be dangerous, you know, if someone else is walking there. So I just wanted to bring that up. And the park looks great. The kids can play, we watch the kids, they're flying kites. Prior to that, you couldn't walk in the grass, because it was like this high, and it's got all the little birds in them, there's birds all over the grass, so it turned out real well, so just wanted to congratulate yous and thank you for the work you did, and it looks real nice. And it does happen to grow back every year, so I don't know what the big deal is. Thank you.
Rob, can you spell your last name for me, please?
Yeah, S-C-H-I-C-L-I-N-G.
Thank you.
Regina.
Regina DeSenza, Forkett River. I see Resolution 8, Item 8. You appointed an alternate member to the Environmental Commission. When is the next meeting? Because I'd like to attend.
November 20.
Huh?
November 20.
When and where?
Here.
Here, 6:30?
Next Wednesday.
I already asked Mr. Connors, but has everyone here yet attended one of the information sessions for the $92 million referendum yet?
Yes.
The October one, were you at, Steve?
Whatever one you told me to go to.
All right, well, the October 17th meeting was changed to October 15th, okay? And I missed that one, but that was supposedly the fourth information session.
That is the one that she told you to go to, because she wasn't going to be at it, correct?
I couldn't be there.
That is the one.
But it was supposed to be 17.
Have all of us attended, was you?
All right, well, great, because here's the thing. Yeah, I was coming home from the airport, I can't be everywhere. So those meetings have not been televised, they have not been put on YouTube, and they've been attended by between 25 and 50 people. The school district is not doing a great job of publicizing this $92 million referendum, and that's why I'm speaking about it here. And Mr. Connors, you've lived here a long time, and I believe, did you serve on the school board, too?
If they appoint me township attorney, I will be there.
Huh?
I don't, I've never been to a school board meeting since I've lived here.
Ever?
No.
You weren't on that board.
I don't go to board of freeholder meetings, I don't attend any of the sessions of the legislature.
You were only on this board, okay. All right, all right, whatever, you know, but I...
You're going to be in top meetings, running like that?
No, no, no. All right, but I think everybody should be informed, and the school district better make a better effort to inform people at 5:00 PM next Thursday, November 21st. There should be an information session, if they don't change the date again, in the lecture hall at 5:00 PM prior to their monthly meeting at 6:00 PM. You know, if 25 people or 50 people out of 28,000 are attending these meetings, guess what? There's a lot of people that don't know right here in this room, okay? And that's pretty darn sad. And then I think it was Mr. Kenneth made a remark to thank people for running. And then, I think it was Mr. Kennas made a remark to thank people for running. Well, folks, I had my fourteenth run this year, I think only Mr. Parker has run more than me in Ocean County. I wanna thank the people that gave me ninety-four thousand votes, but everyone should know that it was two hundred and fifteen thousand, I believe, for the winners. So, we did have an unbelievable turnout for this election, and I went to all the districts, it went beautifully. The early voting worked really well. There weren't really horrible lines anywhere, I only found one line all day, so please keep up the good work, Lacy Township, come out and vote.
Congratulations.
My name is Neil Piero. I'd like to ask a question to Veronica. The last time we spoke about the preliminary use report connected to the nuclear plant, you said it wasn't available, is it?
It's on the website now.
Do you have, can I get the link tomorrow?
Yeah, well, it's right on our municipal website, under Comprehensive Plans. Am I correct, Amy, right? Yeah, there it is. I mean, if you want a copy of it, it's gonna be about seven or eight dollars.
That's fine.
All right.
And I can get it tomorrow?
You can ask Amy and she can print it off for you.
Can I get it tomorrow, Amy? Thank you.
Any other comments this evening? Mr. Bender?
Good evening, Council. Ed Jarrett, and...
Can you spell your last name, sir?
J.A.R.R.E.T.T. And we actually live by the two houses holding out on the bay for not being mowed, and I thought that was great last year that we came up with a compromise, that we would have, you know, the option to mow or not, and there's only two down on the south end, but we're the house right next to that. And if anybody thinks that's, you know, bird sanctuary, or it looks great, or whatever, they, you need to go down now and take a look at it, because it is not. This is an overgrown, it'd be like someone in your neighborhood, any neighborhood around here, that would just let their grass grow for the whole year. It's not pleasant to look at, and we bought our house, we had the view of the Barnegat Light. And I know they're all worried about people that have view, but I'm from Maine and I wanted to be near a lighthouse, and I love looking at the Barnegat Light right from the bedroom window, and I can't see the Barnegat Light. I've got bushes now that are probably ten, twelve feet tall, that two people have held out and said that we don't wanna mow, and I believe that that's the piece that we were talking about. Is there a turtle life? We've been down every angle on this, as you possibly can think, but it really is a bay front, it's the view, it's the water, that's why we bought the houses there, that's why we wanna see the view of the water, and I love it when the kids are running and they're looking at the water, and you see the boats going by, the sailboats. Now we have a part where we can watch the sailboats, then all of a sudden, we see bushes. So we can't even watch a sailboat go all the way by down to the jetties or anything like that. So we're just asking, even though people don't think the view is there, we do just almost as much of a mortgage payment as the taxes that you pay to get that view. And we work very hard, and have worked very hard, very blessed with how we were able to get to the shore. But we have a one-story house, and we're not gonna be forced to go up because we wanna see the view. We got the house, we had the view, and because of this nonsense going back and forth and no mow, eventually, we won't be able to see any water to our right. We can't see it now during the summer, because the bushes have just gotten out of control. So, the original permit said low-lying grasses, low-lying, there was an effort to say that everything would be low-lying, I don't know what low-lying is, but fifteen, twenty-foot tall trees that are eventually gonna be there, those bushes are gonna keep going. They doubled in size last year. So we're just asking for someone to understand, what are those species? Are they eventually? Because one neighbor, one of the south neighbors, went to my other half and said, you know, "We're really sorry that we're blocking your view, maybe we can work with the town and get some of this stuff knocked down." And we haven't heard anything, but again, they're on a raised deck, and the last house is on a raised deck, they've got about three feet. Well, that, they're starting to lose. So I would say another year or two, you might find the two to succumb to this, that it's just ridiculous. But to leave it looking like that at the end, people call it the jungle for a reason. You can't get off with a dog, you cannot get off the path, the stuff has grown onto it all summer long. And there's ticks, there's all kinds of stuff. We just found out, not only the vegetation is not managed, or what it is, we had green beans, we just found pumpkins this year. So everything is growing in that whole area. If anybody, you know, is throwing something in that area, or it came from recycling, some of the soils originally, we've got all kinds of vegetation that doesn't belong there, and we just, again, we've been begging for this, and we were told last year we were gonna have a meeting over the winter. And we've been calling and calling, and there's been no comprehensive meeting on this, just to get this under control. Let's go with the low-lying grasses, let's go with the flowers that can stay there all year long. Let's come up with a plan that satisfies everybody. But to let it grow natural, to get to the point where it looks like a jungle...
Well, let me, let me interrupt you. Number one, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's wrong, and I think it should be cut, at least twice a year. So, because we actually find other homeowners that don't cut...
Right.
...for a long period of time.
Right.
So I agree with you with that. Further, within the scope of the permit now, we're allowed to cut when we want, we still honor cutting twice a year.
Right.
But this is the same DEP...
Yeah.
...that I assure you has sent out a public service announcement on pooling water to keep mosquitoes out, because they, there are some, and we do have some cases in Ocean County, because my employer follows that...
Yeah.
...of West Nile virus, and there are mosquitoes that carry that, and they don't carry it if we don't provide them a habitat to do it.
Right, I agree.
They go somewhere else, they die at first for us, so they'll probably die tonight. Further, you referenced ticks.
Hmm.
Again, same other, there have been memos that have come out from the DEP that said you have to keep your property in tow. There's been no shortage of, over the years, maybe not this year, maybe not last year, of babesia and, what's that other disease you get from ticks?
I know, it's a...
It's, I'm...
I know, it's a...
Lime disease.
Lime disease, yes.
So, you are right. So this is, this is a DEP that has sometimes conflicted with itself, but I'm with you, that should be cut.
Thank you.
And two times a year is not unreasonable.
And, and now that the Hescos are in there, we haven't seen any oysters yet, but they are starting to grow the grasses out there. Hopefully, some of the eel grass is coming back, but eventually, we like, I haven't been able to go crabbing, but then, when we bought the house, again, being from Maine, I love the idea of going over the wall and going into the water and putting the traps out, and I was catching some really good crab. Haven't done it in the last three years, but once that's all settled out out there, we should be able to go crabbing again. But, again, there's this limitation, that you have to go through that growth to get there. So I went in three years ago, and I was getting covered in ticks, and all I wanted to do was make a path, and I got a letter saying you can go to jail, you can have this huge fine if you do this again. And it's like, and then we tried to do it again this year, we had a small path, we put clam shells down. Somebody else in the, what I call the south jungle, had clam shell path out to the walkway. Well, we've started putting clam shells down, and we got a letter, you can go to jail, you can be fined, and so we had to go out and clean up the clam shells and pick up the mats, and it's just, all I'm trying to do is not walk over to the path from the house without getting into the ticks and all the stuff that is down there.
We'll revisit it. My opinion is, and I'm one of five, regardless of who sits in the mayor's seat, it's committee, form of government, every vote is worth the same twenty percent, but for me, that should be groomed accordingly.
Yeah, it's a waterfront property.
And two times a year is not unreasonable.
Yeah. Thank you so much. We appreciate, again, the effort that's being made.
Take care, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Bender?
Barry Bender in an older part of the town, is that, okay? Anyway, I wanna read this, and I'm gonna give it to the deputy mayor when I'm done.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
I hope I'm not interrupting.
R.E., access to Warden House to complete historic registry application. Members of the Lacy Township Committee, and the senator, and I'll always call him senator regardless of who he is.
I'm still not gonna go to legislative.
Okay, I took my best shot.
School board meetings.
Having previously requested verbally for access to the historic Warden House to complete our application for registration as a historic building, I am submitting this written request for the application, uh, for the same, I'm sorry. With your verbal rejection of the request, and with the recent removal of the sign identifying the building, I feel it is necessary to put my request in writing. To the best of my knowledge, the purchase of the Warden House has yet to close, which I have argued still gives the authority for my entry into the same, the right of the present property owner, which is Lacy Township. With the recent removal of Warden House sign, which the reason for has not been shared with the public, it gives me more concern that the rights of the citizens of Lacy Township are being ignored in behest of a monetary real estate transaction, which insults the history of our town and those whose families have been residents here from our town inception. And I say thank you for your attention to this matter. Sincerely, Barry Bender. And I'll give this to you, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bender.
As, as, I'm gonna make a comment on the other subject that's been discussed here tonight. This committee decided some time back that the maintenance of the land that's owned by the township, okay, and we remember it's owned by the township. You guys made a decision that'll be left up to the people who live behind that property as to what will be done with that property, and it has remained that way. We have been waiting since last January for a meeting to discuss the vegetation on the township property, which hasn't happened yet, hopefully, we get something soon. My personal opinion, people love their views, but if you go too far with removing the vegetation, their views will be real good because the water's gonna be where their homes are. That, that growth, much of that growth, especially the thick woody stuff, helps retain the soil and keeps, it fights the erosion, you're not gonna permanently end the erosion, so just wanted to share that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. Bender. Sir, in the back.
I didn't wanna ruin the momentum of the night on that one topic. Bob Loray, Lacy Township, hopefully, you know how to spell my last name.
I might have to ask you.
But now, I come up tonight, number one, I wanna thank Tim McDonald for giving me the opportunity to be his running mate, and most importantly, I wanna thank the community for their faith in our township government, re-electing Tim, and now I have the honor to come forth and be on the governing body, and it's actually a real honor for me, after six generations of our family here, to be representing the township of Lacy. One thing I do wanna comment on, I didn't catch your name back there...
Kelly Smith House.
But you were spot on when you turned around and addressed the public, and I wanna thank you for that. Because one of the things that is interesting is, I've been coming to these meetings for well over a year, I've learned a lot from that side of the dais and also here. And, one thing to come up and talk, but also, if you have a problem, let's get people in place and run for office or whatever. Because, I'll tell you what, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine thousand people in town to see our school board run unopposed when half the meetings, the people come up and complain to the governing body, concern the school board. So just keep that in mind, but I wanna thank you again. Regina, I made that meeting too, so I was listening also.
I'm ready.
But, to all the candidates that run for election, I wanna thank them, because win or lose, you're involved. You're putting your name out there, and Mr. Dolan, who I met about a month ago, he's seems to be a very nice young man, and I had spoke to him about staying involved, because I'll tell you what, we need younger people, and even at this case, in this case, when we see what's the people that are getting involved, we could actually even use middle-aged people to get involved, because everybody's complaining about age limits, and the olders all this getting involved. But again, I just wanna thank everybody, it's an unbelievable honor to come in January to be representing this town, and thank you for this opportunity.
Thanks, sir. Come on up again.
Yeah, so I wanted to touch on what Barry said about the meeting that we talked about last year that has yet to happen, because we keep going back and forth with the same things here. Now, they, some of these people that live there and are happy with the way the park looks, you know, that's their opinion, I'm disgusted by how the park looks. I love the jungle end of the park, it's alive, it's beautiful, and it may block their view, but if you go down there and look on the other side of that gentleman's house, you'll see a monstrosity that blocks people's view on the other side of that house. So that, that was allowed to be built, that large gray, modern-looking, horrible-looking, in my opinion, house is blocking other people's view. So, there's gotta be a compromise where it doesn't get, you don't go down there with a tractor and a saw arm and just literally cut everything down for no reason. There's gotta be some kind of compromise of maintaining, leaving this here, leaving some there, leaving some there, leaving some there, instead of cutting it all down. They're not weeds, despite what the woman said, they are native plants for the most part. The path is, I gotta say, at least five feet wide, so there's plenty of room for two people to walk side by side, and maybe some of those homes should be allowed to have a pathway if they're afraid of ticks. Thing is, when you get the birds gone, when they've got nowhere to nest, they're go, they eat ticks. And also, they've always complained about the geese. Well, when you cut that grass down, it's like putting out a buffet for the geese. They don't like tall grass, they won't come and nest and poop all over the place, which they've complained about in the past. Cutting it down that low is an invitation for the geese to come, okay? I've never seen anybody walking on that path, as I'm walking one way, have to go around and literally walk in those dangerous plants where children can fall. Never. I walk that path all the time, I've never seen it happen. So maybe, instead of like the one house did, first, they put weed killer down on park property, so they wouldn't have to walk through the dangerous ticks. Second, they put clam shells down. Third, they put rubber mats, all illegal. So if they care so much about the park, why are they doing that? All right? So maybe they should be allowed to have access to the park. It's a very short distance from their property to the walking path. That's a compromise we could have. I don't see a problem with that. Mowing along either side of the path, we've talked about that many times, for maintenance, if you wanna make it look prettier and more well-maintained, we've never had a problem with that.
We're gonna have a meeting, but it's gonna be difficult to, as soon as January comes.
It's a scheduling issue, and we're trying to schedule it. Britta from St. Barnegat Bay is trying to help coordinate that, and she can't get all the people to commit to a date and time. Us running here...
So let's have more than one meeting, let's have a meeting for people who can make it, and let's have another meeting for the people who can't make it. I mean, we can't keep it off.
Well, it's not, it's not that people such as the residents, it's the experts that we want in the room that can't coordinate a date and time together, because their schedules are all busy. It's not about the residents. I mean, us, five, six of us, seven of us having the meeting is gonna get us nowhere because we're not the experts.
Right.
Right, so that's why I'm counting on Britta, and she has a lot of resources, and she wants to invite a lot of people of different multitudes of expertise to assist us in doing something.
And those groups won't want anything cut ever, and you know that. So what we're trying to do is make everybody happy, that's impossible. We have an obligation to clean the place up and to keep it groomed accordingly, so that it doesn't harbor ticks, pests, or mosquitoes. So, we already have a gabion wall there, I don't know what inviting all these other special interest groups is gonna do, but I just don't think, you know, we're making, we're continuing to spend township time on this issue, and we're making a mountain out of what I will call a molehill.
That's your opinion, that's not my opinion, because I love that park.
Well, we've talked about it for a very long time now.
Yeah, well, obviously, it's still, it's still an issue, so, because we haven't come up with a plan that works for everybody. And I, and selective cutting, selective...
We have a right and an obligation to cut. To let everyone have their own way down there, I disagree with it. Maybe we'll revisit it moving forward.
Okay, well, again, the people that did speak, that love what you've done down there, had said that their neighbors or their husbands or whoever say thank you. Well, I am saying no thank you to the two hundred and nineteen people on Lacy Chatter who agree with me and don't want it cut. So on their behalf, I say no thank you to that, and to please...
I mean, do they live there? I mean, Lacy Chatter is not an official park.
It doesn't matter if they live there or not.
We talk through official channels.
It's a public park, it's a public park.
Laura, I follow Lacy Chatter, and I can tell you, the two hundred and nineteen out of those, a hundred and eighty have no clue what you're talking about. All they know is, they think...